Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Grandville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gelderlos.
Here.
Maryka.
Here.
Norhuck.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truust.
Here.
VanderWaal. And Mayor Mas.
Here. Well, in the absence of a local pastor to give the invocation tonight, Councilmember Gelderlos has agreed to do so. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation, and then we're going to follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father, our God, our Creator, we give you thanks for another day in which we can live and work and play and enjoy your creation and all your blessings. And we thank you for those blessings, Lord, and for all that we have as individuals and as members of this community. We pray that we may be truly aware of just how blessed and fortunate we are. We pray too, Lord, that you'd protect our first responders and all of our city staff, keep them safe. We ask that you'd grant this city council wisdom and guide us as we make decisions that will keep Grandville a great place and a safe place to live. And lastly, Lord, we just ask for your healing hand on Matt and that you would guide him and his doctors, that they continue in his treatments and recovery. And pray for his family, too, that you'd grant peace to his wife and the kids and let them know that you're sustaining them. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Before I forget, I talked to Councilmember VanderWaal earlier today, and he had something come up and was not able to be here. And so is there a motion to excuse JR from tonight's meeting?
Remove.
Or motion support in discussion? All those in favor of excusing JR, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Which leads me to another, just comment. We have the agenda before us, so we'll be asking for an approval of that. The one thing on there that I'm suggesting is that when we talk about the possible sale of the 34th Street, because I believe, Randy, that will take a supermajority to sell city property.
I think so, yeah.
If we could hold off on that, if not so, for JR, I think he would appreciate, well, I know he would appreciate that.
Any of us would.
Yeah, okay. So with that little heads up, certainly we can discuss it, and I think that'd be great to do so, yeah, tonight. But, so we have the agenda in front of us. Is there a motion to approve that agenda?
So move, support.
Motion support, discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, in the opposition, please say no. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, August 28th, which sounds like summertime. It sounds like a long time ago, especially on a day like dark date today, but anyway, only a few weeks ago. So is there a motion to approve the minutes from our last regular meeting, August 28th?
So move, support.
Any additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to point out in particular? All those in favor of approving, please say yes. Yes, in the opposition, please say no. Great, we also have the bills tonight. We've got two sets of bills, the old fiscal year in the amount of $10,016.26. Dennis, anything on those bills, or Jane?
No, sir.
Okay, any questions for either Dennis or Jane on those bills? Now, is there a motion to approve the bills for the old fiscal year in the amount of
So move, support.
Motion support. Any other discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maryka.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. New fiscal year, a little more substantial amount, $532,000 and a little bit more. Dennis, anything on those bills? Jane?
I have to point out that included in your list of bills to be approved, we have $132,000 for the Michigan cat backhoe. It also includes $104,000 to account for the garage floor. So your staff has planned their spend and they're spending their plans, so we're knocking out through the CIP. And then the last thing I'd like to point out is there are a couple of small bills totaling roughly $1,700 for the tree grant trees, which the tree board applied for and was approved. It is a reimbursing grant, so we are spending that, and then she will apply for reimbursement for that, so that's awesome.
Great. Council, any other questions or comments about any of the bills? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills for the new fiscal year in the amount of 200, I'm sorry, $532,747.84?
So move, support.
Motion support. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maryka.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council, please, just come on up to the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're thinking about. Any takers? You came out on a rainy night, you know, I mean, get you anything. All right. Good, next item is the consent agenda. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, did I miss something, Paul?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. All right. Under the consent agenda, we have the fire EMS report for July and the treasurer's August report. We also have park and rec board minutes, and of a more substantial nature, a request for authorization of approving the public roadways and utilities in Alderwood. I'm sure you've all gone past there, and it seems like every day there's a couple more houses. I used to be able to keep track of how many there were, but anyway, the project is gone. Yeah, yeah. It's gone along well, and there's, you know, in our materials, it's a letter or a packet of information from Warren Bruchenk to Charlie. So Charlie, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, they comply to all our city standards, and some issues have been corrected, so nothing very large.
Okay, good. So any questions about anything on the consent agenda, council, or anyone? If not, is there a motion to, Randy, should we do a roll call on that because there's authorization to accept the roads? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, support.
Motion support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll on that, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maryka.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, all ready to the city manager's report?
Mr. Mayor, Chief May is here. His first item regarding waiver for antinepotism. Chief May, if you could just talk for a few seconds about the...
Sure, the memo should be pretty self-explanatory. I guess my question for Randy would be with JR's absence, should this be deferred to a different meeting because it required an unanimous? And I think it's unanimous of those. Folks here are present. Yes. I guess I'd be happy to take any questions about the memo.
It's pretty clear and self-explanatory. The only thing that surprised me is, I'm surprised that he's old enough to be a firefighter because I remember when his dad was actually in a car seat at my piano lessons, so his father was, yeah, like a baby. It doesn't seem like that long ago, but anyway. Randy, you understand, right?
Yeah.
So anyway. So is there authorization under, giving an antinepotism waiver for Ben Mandering to join the fire department?
So move, support.
Motion support. Okay. Any other questions, comments? It's great to see somebody's interested. It's really nice. Younger person especially, it's good, it's great. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truust.
Yes.
Gelderlos.
Yes.
Maryka.
Yes.
Norhuck.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Dennis, new sewer contract with Ottawa County and...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Fifty years goes by fast, or 60 years, or however long it is.
And we're planning for the next 60 years.
Yeah.
So the draft restated sewer agreement, sewer disposal agreement was presented to the council in January, and at that time, Todd and Pat did a presentation and answered some questions. Since that time, the agreement has gone to all the member jurisdictions, and they have approved it, with some minor deviations, which you see in the materials in your packet this evening. Todd and Pat are also here this evening to answer any last-minute questions. The request for this evening is just to receive this, ask questions if you have them, and then set for approval on September 25th.
Any comments, questions? I know Randy Gelderlos remembers years ago, this was something we talked about a lot, about the sewer agreement and our relationship with Ottawa County, and it's been a good one, like from the late 60s, I think?
66.
66?
Yeah, before my time, but...
Well, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
We've talked about 15, 16 years back.
Yeah, yeah. So, good. Gentlemen, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think we've come a long way with this. We've got a great partnership with Ottawa County. I think this takes several documents and puts them into one format, so features leaders within the municipalities can understand where we are in a more concise manner.
Now, I've got a question. If you, could you just give a Reader's Digest version on our relationship with the city of Wyoming and what's still in place and what it would take to, yeah, like, it doesn't have to be everything, but just generally?
So we had an initial agreement with them sometime in the 90s, early 90s. We had a pipeline that's in the ground that was decommissioned in the early 2000s. We, before Ken Lut, he had revised agreement with Wyoming, so we still have a relationship with them, but we're not using that in any manner at this point.
But, I mean, it's usable, we could use it if we come to some agreement. I mean, the pipes went decommissioned, but not, like...
Not removed.
Not removed or destroyed or...
Right, yeah.
Okay.
I think also we should point out, I think, gentlemen, that in this agreement, add four sections in Jamestown to the service area as well, right?
Yes.
So there is, in addition to consolidating agreement and three amendments and a industrial pre-treatment order, we saw those things in here, there's also a change to the service area by adding four sections in Jamestown Township. I think that's the only change to the service area.
Remember, we added some sections in Blendon Township, but again, that's probably been a lot longer ago than I thought.
Right, that's been...
But more flow is a good thing, right, Todd?
Yeah, we're at about 60% of our capacity right now.
Yeah.
Actually, we're pretty close to saying that segment's growth, primarily because of low flow fixtures, so even though there's houses and businesses being added, the model why they're sending us isn't as much, so, but it's been consistent, we're quite about that, so.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to consider it again on the 25th.
True.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Josh.
Just kind of a related comment, I guess, since we're talking about the Clean Water Plant. I saw that the city of Holland is bringing online an egg-shaped digester similar to ours, and they gave us a little shout-out on social media, Mayor did, about us helping them seed their, their egg, I guess, as far as sharing some of our, he called it like a sourdough...
Yeah, it's like starter.
Like a sourdough starter, but yeah, it's been getting quite a bit of attention, yeah, but that's nice. I didn't realize that we were collaborating with them and helping them out with it. That's great.
It was about 30 semi-trailers that went down there of seed material.
Oh, wow.
Well, that's more than a little jar of starter. It was 30,000 gallons.
Yeah, I was, so they tagged us on Facebook.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
I was commenting about it, and I was like, not quite sure how to respond.
But you're welcome, or?
Something like that. You're welcome, don't send it back to us. Nice that we could help them out with that, so I'm sure that you guys have probably been sharing expertise and experience and, you know, tips and everything, too, as they bring on some new technology for their plant, so nice to be collaborative that way in the region with other municipalities, taking a leadership role, really. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions about sewer agreement?
Okay, last item, which the mayor has already alluded to, is the sale, or potential sale of the 34th Street property. That was, this was presented to the council, I want to say, back in March, with the original proposal to buy the property was to split it and to resell the house only to recover some of the cost of the purchase in the first place. And then that was brought back to the council for confirmation in May, and the council at that time decided to hold the actual split and sale. So we're bringing this back this evening because there were two or more council members at the last meeting that showed an interest, and so we're presenting it for this evening with a couple of alternatives, just so you could see what else is available to the council.
Thoughts? Paul, I believe you were in favor of selling the property?
Yeah, and, yeah, and I was in favor of the purchase then as well, which, just going back a little further, you recall, there were only four of us here for that special meeting, so and JR wasn't here for that either, so, I mean, he, it's certainly appropriate that we wait to get his, his input. Yeah, and I appreciate the city manager laying out the different options here and putting the costs associated with them, too. So, yeah, no, I agree with the original thought, you know, when we purchased the property, it was that we would sell the house and try to defray some of the costs of developing the property, the rest of it that we're going to keep if we really wanted, and I still think that makes sense.
Other thoughts? Justin, I think that you expressed some thoughts also in favor of that.
Yeah, I completely agree with Councilmember Truust.
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, Randy.
I've got a handful, a few questions, a handful, maybe not that many, but I guess, first of all, how bad do we need the sale or the money back for our budget? And then I guess another question on my mind as we, as we talk about extending a bike trail through there, do we need it? Do we need that property to keep that potential future bike trail on the north side of Buck Creek?
Well, let me answer the last question first.
Okay.
We have prepared everything up to split the property leading up to the May council meeting, and so everything is prepared. The city assessor, the caterer just has to do the, confirm the split. And that plan would be just to split the property that's on this side of the creek, large enough to meet the setback requirements for the existing home, and then the rest of the acreage would remain as part of the project. We'll call it the project for now. It has no project design and has no project funding yet attached to it. However, in terms of the need of money, the bridge does need some work, and we have outlined that to the council as well. Charlie has had an assessment done on the bridge, and so we anticipate that any proceeds that would come from the sale of this property would assist with us updating and making safe the bridge that exists there today, which we plan to use as part of the trail, trail system.
Okay, so, and I'm not as familiar with that parcel as I should be, but, so, on the six acres we're going to keep, do we have the ability there to cross over back to the north side through a neighbor's backyard if we had an easement or, you know, through some of those other yards, just thinking long-term?
At this moment, the bridge is the only access point across the creek, and so when we dial back time towards the, the project when it was first envisioned, when the Spark Grant was developed, it was, we included funds to build a brand-new pedestrian bridge. I think it was further east?
It's where the old, the old bridge, where the cemetery was.
Yeah. So this purchase afforded us to have a bridge that was basically pedestrian-friendly, ready, and with some minor upgrades, I think we identified about $110,000, $115,000 worth of work that we'd have to do on the bridge.
For the trail?
Yes.
But once we get over the bridge, then where do we go?
Because then... You'll go around and around in a loop and come back on the same bridge.
Okay, you, okay.
At this point.
Okay.
But...
But if we wanted to tie that into future trail expansion, we'd have to get back...
Well, could connect further east to the Millrais.
Yeah, there are certain, there are opportunities, but not something that we budgeted for or planned for at this point.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Tim.
Sure. I'm just going to say, back then, I would, was in favor of option three, and I still am, and I'd like to ask Josh a little bit about the Park and Rec Master Plan, because somewhere around page 70 or 72, it talks about a goal of the city being to begin picking up properties on the south side of 34th Street, extending all the way to Ivan Rest for the trail Randy's talking about.
I think that's what you were thinking of.
So...
Yeah, there isn't any, any activity in that regard.
No, but this would be...
This would, yeah, it would give us another property that we could, at some point in the future, we have...
Right, so, I mean, this is something that probably won't take place over my lifetime, but unless we start picking up properties, we're never going to be able to do that. Is that right?
Right, yeah, I mean, this was a very strategic purchase, you know, there was a, there's still a plan or at least a preliminary project idea with the Spark Grant. I think we've applied a second time, right, Dennis?
Yes.
And there's a third round as well, hoping to get some funds for developing that, which could also go towards the bridge, potentially, the upgrades, but then would also help develop that acreage on the south side of the creek to be kind of a multi-use mountain bike-type trail.
But what I'm asking is, wouldn't the Park and Rec Committee and the Master Plan want to pick up more green space along Buck Creek here?
Yeah, it's part of that greenway idea, you know, as, as it might become available.
And it is.
Yeah.
We own it.
Right, yeah, but you mean going further, further east, right, towards Ivan Rest?
Thanks.
Yeah. So I guess I could just comment a little bit, too. I'm not opposed to selling the house, I know that was kind of our original thought. I was one of the ones that had commented earlier this year about, you know, kind of, let's wait and see what happens with this grant. I don't know when, when we'll get an answer on the Spark Grant application in the second round, or when the third round starts, because that funding would kind of be dependent on being able to do the additional project over there. But if we would sell the house, that would give us some money to start perhaps working that direction, because if we don't get the grant, we would be on our own to find funding for developing that mountain bike trail, for renovating the bridge, et cetera, so I guess that's my only thought, is I'd kind of like to have all the pieces and kind of know what is available. But at the same time, I, you know, I don't favor tearing a house down that's perfectly good, that someone could use, you know, when there's a housing shortage, you know, it's a nice little house, it's right by the creek. I also don't really favor us just sitting on it and incurring additional costs for upkeep and maintenance, you know, as we start looking towards winter and stuff, too, you know, we don't want to have a house that's not being occupied, that needs to be winterized, that potentially, you know, could be, could deteriorate over the winter, could have issues that would cause us to incur more costs. So I would love to have the answers on the Spark Grant applications at this point, but I don't know when that is expected. Dennis, if you have any more information, or, or Charlie, if you've heard anything, it seems like it's moving kind of slow with that next round.
Um...
And I don't know what our chances are either, but...
I personally don't think we'll ever get a Spark Grant, because Spark Grants was developed for smaller communities that don't have anything. Our parks are pristine, and it kind of, actually, there's a detriment to us, so I, we can, I don't know when to apply again, but I wouldn't hold it hopeful on that.
Yeah, that's what I kind of heard, too, is chances aren't great, because we have some means to be able to develop our own parks, and I've had some success with that already, so, I don't know. I guess, we won't make a final decision until JR's back, it sounds like, but I guess those are just things that I'm kind of thinking. I just wouldn't want to tear it down, I think, and just have it, I mean, have not, tear down a perfectly good house. And I'm not sure, I mean, we talked about maybe doing a trailhead there in a parking lot at some point, maybe, but I don't know if we'd run into floodplain issues now with putting something impermeable there in the floodplain, having to remove soils and excavating, I know that's additional cost that's significant, and just, you know, taking a house out and grading it and pouring asphalt, it's not that simple in the floodplain, probably.
We tore the old chapel down, now we have a lot of parking spots.
We have parking spots there.
We're only 30 yards away from the river.
Yeah.
Randy had asked a question about the need for funds, I mean, it sounds, I'm not sure you got enough information, it sounds like maybe, it would be nice, yeah.
We just went into it with the intention, we're going to buy it, take the land in the back, what, six acres, and put it for sale, and there would be no loss to the general budget or very little, and so my question is, if we changed our mind, what does that do to, you know, the general budget and to Mr. Steenstra's comment? I think we still have the option of extending that trail, I think, by maybe picking up, you know, the back of some of those parcels without having to buy everything on...
Houses and everything.
On 34th Street and knock it down, so, I mean, we still have that option. I have a friend who lives over there and another neighbor, and I was fortunate enough to get a call from him, and some of those people are not really excited about tearing houses down, or, you know, I think it's a sensitive matter, and we just have to think about it.
And I think, too, there is somebody in that neighbor who's interested in maybe keeping the house, but selling...
Then we wouldn't lose the tax base...
Right.
On the homes, but you could still get...
Get that property for whatever reason, yeah.
And we'd still have access, we'd still retain the access with the, the trail there that goes through currently, you know, driveway, trail, right? So if we, if we needed another access point behind the cemetery at some point to get to the new parking lot, there would be an opportunity for that.
Everything would stay as is today. Yes.
And we'd have the right to go over that driveway.
Yes.
Yeah. Or easement or whatever over that property, you know.
Mr. Mayor, a couple other thoughts?
Yeah.
Right now, we have a number of park projects that have been allocated funds, and they're just waiting to start work, and so I would caution the council from worrying too much about more projects to add to the list before we get these other projects completed. I think that's a, that would be a wise move to, for example, Millrais Park is going to need some money, so we're going to have to get Millrais Park done, and I suggest that we get working on those and then start for these planning projects. It's true that there is a view, we have talked exhaustively among staff about purchasing property along Buck Creek towards Ivan Rest, and I think that's something that's off into the distance in the future, and is not really related to the Spark Grant, because if the Spark Grant comes back and says, yes, you got your money, that money, money is going to be all spent in developing the trails and everything that is on the six acres and the other parcel that the city already owns. So selling this property is not going to have any impact on crossing the creek to get to that property, that, that bridge is going to be ours, and we're going to fix it up, it's going to look nice, and it's going to be safe. And it's not going to impact any future property acquisitions, because we really don't have any plans set in place today to buy those, or money to do that. So I would suggest that, I mean, we're recommending that we sell the house, that the proceeds are used to help fix up the bridge, and then we can engage in a planning process for how to expand that, we'll call it a linear trailway down to Ivan Rest. Does that make sense?
Where would that linear trailway go? Behind the houses or along the road?
It would probably go, the best option would be on the other side of the creek, because we have had a few discussions with some of the property owners, they're not, they're not interested in selling their houses, they're interested in selling the flood-prone property that's on the other side of the creek. And so if we took the same approach as we take, as we did take with this property, we could carve out a small little swath of property all along Buck Creek. The other benefit that that gives us is it gives us immediate access to the creek, so if there was any flooding issue that we had to address as a municipality, we would have quick access to the creek without having to get permissions to go on other people's property. Those are just, you know, pie-in-the-sky ideas, as I said, there's no plan yet in place to actually start offering people to purchase their property. to actually start offering people to purchase their property. So with that, we'd recommend that the council take this up at their next meeting on the 25th.
Rick, any other comments or questions? Not, Dennis, anything else?
That's it, please.
Okay. Let's start with councilmember comments, Paul. Start with you tonight.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Tim?
I have nothing additional either.
All right, good. Justin?
Nothing.
Oh, my goodness. Gosh.
Just, again, please, the park projects that we are undertaking and that are in the works right now are moving forward. I was out the other day checking out the new pickleball court site over by Wedgewood, and it looks like that's coming along nicely, we've got some new concrete in there, the new horseshoe bits, looks like they're about completed, and they'll be moving over to the other side for the pickleball soon. It looks like it's graded and ready to go, but, yeah, looks real nice. Should be pretty nice when it's done.
No comments, I just have a question for the gentleman on the back row. Are you working on an Eagle Scout badge, or?
Yeah, I'm working on it.
All right, welcome, and I thought so. Nice to see you.
You picked kind of a short meeting, too. Yeah. I don't, just a couple things, I met with Kyle Boss this morning, who, as you know, is very involved with trees, and she's got a couple fun projects coming up. And there's also gonna be later this month or next month, so, native plants and tree planting, so a couple of good things there. Also, went to a ribbon cutting at Prairie Side Suites. Sherry and Paul Antisak sold the property to a Granville couple, Steve and Janine. So they're the new owners, and they had a big open house on Saturday, it was really nice, and it's fun to go in that place, and said it's nice to have such a unique, really nice place for people to come and stay in Granville. Also, I had talked about getting you all a copy of an article about e-bikes, and I copied it, and they are sitting on my copy right now, so expect them in the mail, so. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Some support.
Support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Thank you, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight.